Okay, then, uh, let's open up, uh, the meeting. And first announcement is, uh, this required thing regarding, uh, remote, uh, recordings. So here we go. It said, "This meeting of the planning board is being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders to spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place." This meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the Rutland's website, at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by following, by, do so in the following manner: by watching Rutland Community Television live on Channel 192, on the town's website, www.townofrutland.org, or by viewing a recording of the meeting on the town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So, I guess, first thing, just to make sure, we do have Tim Narwald here? Yes? Tim?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. You're here, right?
Correct.
Okay, Sean Narwald, you here? Uh, Sean Moore, sorry about that.
Sean, are you with us?
Sean, you're muted. Sean, can you hear us now?
Where are you? Sean, you're with us?
I'm here, you hear me?
Okay, good.
Okay, and Dick, you're here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, any word from Marilyn?
Um, I had a call with Marilyn a few minutes ago. She has like, I understood that she was able to log in or she understood the process. I don't know what's happening now. I have, this phone is tied up on this call, so it's hard for me to call her at this point.
Okay, uh, okay, and Tamika is here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just looking down at the bottom, and according to this, it is showing eight participants.
Uh, that's correct. There's a total of nine actually. One is a duplicate, one is Mike, which, which I'm using his login, and I'm using a telephone to, to get the audio.
Okay.
So that 1-508 number is my, is my office telephone number.
Yep, okay. Uh, I just wanted to make sure for the record that we all, you know, who is, who is here?
So, if I could, just for the public's benefit, uh, if anybody in the public would like to send an email with a question, they can do so at my address. It's outlined right here under option one. Or people can call in, as everybody else has, and get access to the meeting, just like everybody else has.
Okay, so email for David George is DGeorge@TownOfRutland.org.
Yeah.
If you wish to send an email. Okay, uh, so I guess, first thing is, actually, on the agenda is, uh, minutes invoices and so forth. We have minutes from 3:10. Do I... Have a motion to accept the minutes of 3:10?
I make a motion to accept the minutes for 3:10.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
No.
Uh, I, I have just one, one little thing, and I guess, and it's just, it's just kinda new to me. Uh, I noticed that, uh, on the votes that were taken on the roll call, uh, Tamika has used, uh, the response of "yea."
Yeah, I don't like that.
Uh, and I, like I say, I kinda don't, I, I can see it if it was Y-E-A.
I'll use whatever you guys would like me to use, you just let me know.
Yeah, uh, or...
I guess in my mind, I was thinking "yea" or "nay." Um, but I definitely could've misspelled it, or if you want me to do it a different way.
That, that "yea" is spelled L, uh, yeah, Y-E-A.
Okay. Okay, I will...
Y-A-E, excuse me.
I'll, I'll amend that in these minutes, and then I'll do that going forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else with anything on that?
No.
Okay.
Did we, did we get any of the stuff that was asked for? Did we get it? Have we got an email from DPW? And, um, the board review of the finance of the account? Was that money, did that show up? What item are you referring to, Dick? In particular on this agenda? Maple Hills Estate. And in there, where I had mentioned halfway down in the thing, um, DPW will, he will send a letter from Joe to the board. Right, I can answer that question. We, we don't have a letter, I don't believe. We do have, I do have verbal confirmation from the DPW director, that he has no problem at this time as far as the sewer plan. Okay.
And then Dick's other point was the, uh, $8,000 to the account.
Uh, we are still waiting for those funds to be received.
Okay.
If I could just briefly, I see someone out there with an ID of 1-5088. Can that person identify themselves, please, for the record?
Yeah, this is Marilyn Sedoti.
Okay, good. All right, Marilyn.
Hi. I just, uh...
All right, thank you. I'm all set, I just wanted to know, know who that party was, thank you.
I just figured out how to get on.
Okay, let's just make a note, Marilyn joined at 6:40.
Thank you.
Anything further on the minutes?
Was, the only thing I was gonna say, uh, Dave, can you toggle up a little? Go up the other way? Yeah, "Brittal" isn't spelled correctly, so that's just more of a correction. There shouldn't be B-R-T-N-A-L.
What?
Is that spelled right? Yeah, it's, yeah, B-R-I-N?
Yes.
Brittal?
Brent now. B-R-I-N-T-N-A-L.
Yeah, but this is spelled B-R-I-N-T-N-A-L, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I'm...
Tim, I think a lot of people pronounce it "Brittal," but it is act, it does actually have that extra N in there.
Oh, okay, it must be a New England thing then, 'cause I've always thought it was B-R-I-T-N-L-N-A-L.
Nope.
Maybe it's like February with the extra R thrown in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm good, I just, it didn't make, it didn't look right to me, I guess, so, good enough, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, votes must be by roll call, so, uh, all in favor? Uh, let's start, Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Tim Narwald, aye.
Sean?
Sean Moore, aye.
Uh, Marilyn?
Uh, this is on the minutes?
Yes.
Aye, I read them before.
Okay, and, uh, Norm Anderson, aye. Okay, so much for minutes. Let's see if I can keep track of our agenda here. Okay, next on the list is A&amp;Is for Bryce Lemon Estates. And, uh, I think I'm gonna let, uh, Dave, if you will, explain just exactly what he has included. Uh, this was definitely kind of a mishmash of stuff, and, uh, I'm not really sure how most of you people, uh, feel about handling these.
Yes, because I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, send it to town council.
Well, I, I've got just a question, and it's more on A&amp;Is before we get into specifics. Am I not mistaken that an A&amp;R has to be part of an approved road, and, or accepted road in the Town of Rutland?
No.
So, and, as long as...
As long as it's on an approved plan for a subdivision, it's fine.
Uh, may I have that in writing? Yeah, I can actually tell you that that's from a Mass General Law, chapter 41, section 80, that's the subdivision control law. And what, and how this reads is that, "After the approval of a plan, the number, shape, and size of the lot shown on a plan so approved may from time to time be changed without any action by the board, provided every lot so changed still has frontage on a public way or a way shown on a plan approved in accordance with the subdivision control law, or at least such distance, if any, as is then required." Um, and then it goes on to say in the commentary, "That the applicant may provide an A&amp;R plan which ratifies the proposed changes." The only things that have to happen here is that there has to be sufficient, uh, understanding that there's a performance guarantee on the road, that the road will inevitably be built, it doesn't have to actually be constructed, and there has to be no violation of a condition on the subdivision.
Dave, my, my, one of my questions, okay, I, I agree with that, um, but is that typical in the state of Massachusetts, or is that just something that we've had in our subdivision regs?
This is not from the subdivision regs, this is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's subdivision control law, so therefore this would apply to any municipality in the Commonwealth that has adopted subdivision control, which is in most towns and cities.
Perfect, thank you.
But, but, my, I'm sorry, but, uh, my opinion is, we have so many days to do this because it's an A&amp;R, and if there's anything wrong, and, and I'm saying that, uh, I don't know if I can see it well enough on the computer versus seeing it, you know, real life on a plan, number one, and number two, for crying out loud, it's, that it says "may," and I don't think that the planning board should accept A&amp;R. It should be a plan that has been changed and brought before us. When do they bring up the changed plan?
Yeah. And one more thing, Dave, I, I agree with you of what you said about the Mass General Law, but my next question is, does the A&amp;R have to conform to, even though it's in a subdivision, the A&amp;R, if it's in, uh, the 40, the 40 or the 160, do, does it have to be 150 and 200 frontage? Or does it get a bonus of being in a subdivision, so it doesn't have to have the frontage and, uh, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Frontage and acreage to qualify as an A&amp;R in the Town of Rutland? That's where I was confused when I looked at these A&amp;Is.
Right, as I understand it, this is an open space subdivision plan, so what that means is that there's lesser requirements for area and frontage. It's my understanding, and Norm, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that the A&amp;Is have to conform to the requirements of the special permit aspect of the subdivision.
I would say that's correct.
All right, I'm... Yeah, and there's, there's my, and some of these, which we'll get into, I'll let, uh, Dave, I'll let you do the presentation, where the flag lot syndrome is, is jumping out at me again. So, all right, well, I'll let you go, I apologize, I just wanted to get everything's clarified, I didn't drag this thing in.
Okay, Dick, uh, to your point, uh, and again, I don't know, Dave can maybe clarify this, but, uh, at least these four A&amp;Is that we have here, they have been clocked in with a town clerk. So there has been an official submission of Form A and a plan showing the changes.
Hopefully I can see it.
Yeah, and I know, and that's kind of a, uh, kind of a nasty thing right here, but one thing I have also, I asked Dave, and he says he can do this when we get to looking at the actual plans, uh, assuming we're gonna do this, he can zoom in on any part of the plan.
I'll, uh, let, let's give it a whirl, let's, let's see what happens then.
Okay.
All right, so, the long and the short of it is that there are four A&amp;Is. Uh, there's a cover sheet, the Form A, then there's the corresponding plan for four of them. And at the very end, there are two plans that were also submitted, those plans were not clocked in because they either appear not to be an A&amp;R, or there's no Form A supplied, they're just, really just there for reference only. So what you'll see here is for this one, this affects lots B 908, 909, 910, and 911, also known as Lot 69R, 110, and 109, and 108. So that is for this plan right here. Have we been paid for, have we been paid for it? Yes, there was a check received for 1650. So as you can see, the A&amp;R content corresponds to the title block. So in this particular case, the intent of this A&amp;R is to, is this right here. They wanna reconfigure lots 108, 109, 110, and reconfigure lots 69R.
Okay, Dave, here comes my, my big question. Um, I know we allow this to happen, but the, call it the bookkeeping end of it, is where I've always had trouble with these subdivisions, is they make this change on the A&amp;R, and then it never gets made on, on the actual, if you wanna call it, plan, and then this gets submitted at the end, and the plan doesn't match the A&amp;Is that have been put in there. So I guess my question is, I see this A&amp;R here, this application, where is the updated plan that goes with this?
Well, I think that's for the board to make sure that the board's getting that information from the applicant, when the applicant wants their street acceptance approvals, it was to, simply the question, have there been any revisions to the plans to show different meets and bounds, and so, what are those, and when were they created, and has there been a substituted sheet in the overall subdivision plan set?
Yeah, but my, my problem is, it's up to us to do the bookkeeping for the builder who's asking for these A&amp;Is, and that's where I'm having the trouble.
I say, I think, uh, what we should do is, assuming we're gonna go through with these things, we should request that Klee immediately give us an updated full set of plans, including all of these A&amp;R changes.
Perfect, Norm, that's what I was looking for. I just didn't know if we could do it, that was the question, I, I guess I was asking.
Could, could you use, use the cursor to, how, how many different lines are, are there right here, that, the dotted ones? I can barely make out one.
I see two.
One here, one here, and there's also one here that's hard to see.
Yeah, I could just barely see your cursor.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So there's one that's right, right here, there's one that's like right here, there's one that's kinda dim, that's right here.
Yeah.
All right, so originally there was three lots, and now there's four.
That's what it looks like, Dick.
So... This, this ups the amount, different amount of lots. Does that comply with everything, you know, that's in the subdivision regs in open space? How many lots there are, or whatever, is there anything that's gonna, you know, throw a monkey wrench into it? Uh, actually, I see Blair's on the phone waiting to get into this meeting, should I let him into this meeting?
Yeah.
I have no problem.
Oh, that's the 508, uh, 86...
He's now joining, he's in this meeting, so... I see the video portion, not the audio. I think a lot of these questions are really fit for the applicant. We, you know, we receive the information in, we process it, the applicant's aware of this meeting, so...
Looks like it's connecting to the audio. The only reason, Norm, I was asking is because, um, to Dick's point, if we're going from three lots to four, isn't that a, that's, isn't that a change?
Yes, it would be, and to be perfectly honest with you, looking at it right here, I can't really determine whether it is or isn't.
Okay.
Because, uh, I wish my cursor could, I, I could have my cursor follow, uh, on your screen, but I can't.
Uh, to me, you know, and he, he's got four of these different ones, you know, he changing lots, so to me, that is, that may be a master change, or, or, not a minor change, but a major change. Is that what I would recommend it be, uh, a hearing on this?
I don't think, I don't think he is creating any more lots.
No, I'm not.
Uh, Klee, I see that you're on the screen, are you in this meeting? Can you hear us?
Yes, I am. You guys missed me?
Well, okay, right now, we're working on, pardon me, we're, right now, we're, we're working on the A&amp;Is, we're working on the first one in the packet.
I see it. Yeah, it's just an A&amp;R, Dickie, I just heard you, it's just an A&amp;R.
Yeah, but you're going from three lots to four?
Well, no, I have to stay within the 112, so what I'm doing is, I'm making it, it was, it was down to 109 for some reason, well, because of the Zone A way back in the, in the front part of it, so we lost, we had to move some lots, and that's what we're, we're doing, we're just gaining, getting it back to 112.
But, but did we approve 112, or 100 and...
The special, special permit allows for 112, Tim.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Hi, Sean.
Hey, I can't see everybody.
Me either, I can only see three of ya.
Yeah, same here.
I got the whole shooting match.
I say we drop this thing and go uptown and meet, it's easier.
All right, so, any other questions on this A&amp;R?
Um, the only question I had is that, that one front, it's like it's 29 feet, is that within?
It's at, it's at the building line, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, and you got 11 feet, 11.3 something feet beside it.
Okay.
To make the 40.
Well, that's what I was asking for.
Yeah.
I didn't see that 11, that 11.35 was in somebody else's lot.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's the only thing I was asking, 'cause it looked like it was 29, but the distance looks the same between the 40-foot lot, and I was just wondering where the rest of it was. Okay.
So you are picking up a lot in, in this thing here.
Okay. I guess I don't have a problem with this. Only to, to your point, Norm, is that, um, we, we need an updated plan when the app, if these are all approved tonight, or if, whatever's approved tonight, I'd like to see updated plans relatively quick with these, uh, new lots on them.
I wanna say within 30 days.
I'm fine with that.
A complete, a complete set showing all of these changes, not just the change pages, a full, fresh, complete set, A to Z, for the entire subdivision, every single page, including these changes.
You guys have yours hung in a file, or is it all together? Like, in other words, could I come up and fix it, or, or do you wanna, I mean, a full set of plans costs like 150 bucks to have them printed.
Do it.
Not that I care, but, you know, it's just a few, a few pages, but I, just, of the site plans, but I, if you want a whole new set, you can have them, but I, I don't know that, if I could just replace a few of the pages.
Norm, the other thing I'd like to see, and David, you can tell me if we have a way of doing this, is, is Klee, is there a way that, uh, I don't know if it's you or whoever prints them, print to a PDF also, so we can have electronic copy that we could keep, so if there is somebody who wants to look at it in the computer, instead of paper-wise, we, in this day that we have to stay socially distant, a PDF's a nice thing to have on your computer, as opposed to trying to go up and look at paper plans. Is that possible?
I can send it to you over, I can, I can, I send it to you right now, if you want.
Well, I, I'd like everything to go through David, so that way it can get filed appropriately in the town.
Okay, that works. I'll send, I have to send it over Dropbox, it's too big a file.
Yeah, well, I, I meant when you got these, when you got these corrected, or I shouldn't say corrected, added incorrectly, we could, I mean, to Norm's point, I would, I'd say we'd need a set, but I, but there's no reason we can't get an electronic one, too. That way it'll be date stamped, the electronic form will have a date stamp on it, too.
But, but these are, these are gonna get recorded. What I'll do is I'll print them off the, uh, uh, registry's website, and I'll get them to you.
No, well, with the, the thought process, and Norm, you can tell me to shut up any time, was, we wanted to, our problem was, then we're in charge of the bookkeeping...
No, I'll do that.
Of the, uh, subdivision, and in the past, and I'm not just saying you, I'm just saying in the past, um, when it came to start accepting stuff, we had to go back and remember and find bits and pieces of paper, so, what I'd ask early before we got on, Klee, is like the updated plans to be updated with the A&amp;R changes in them, so we don't have to go back in a year or so, or six months, and remember what had been changed.
Fair enough.
The other, the other thing is, you know, all of these changes are gonna show on more than one page of that book that is the subdivision plan.
Okay.
And is it gonna be classified as a, a, a minor change or a major change?
It's just an A&amp;R, I believe it's a minor change, I don't think it's a major change.
In, in the past, we have always, uh, considered it a minor change.
By adding these lots? Because you're adding not only the lots, but also the sewer water hookup, you know, they're gonna be extra tapped and tapping for it. I'm just, I just don't want somebody to come back in later on and say, "How come you didn't have a hearing on this because it looked like a major?" Do we vote on it to be minor change or a major change?
You, you never have a hearing on an A&amp;R, Dick.
Oh, yeah.
Well, this is, this is why I'm saying this should not be an A&amp;R.
Yeah, all I can remember is that, uh, on Bear Hill, we did, uh, he did some similar things, and we considered those to be minor changes.
The only, to, to Dick's point, and, and I'm okay, I'm on the, the major minor, but I could say a minor change, as long as the plans are updated. To Dick's point, there's gonna be different sewer taps and different water taps that's on the complete plan set, and that's why I said if we update it, and have an updated set, to your point, Norm, in 30 days, then, I guess I could consider this a minor change, as long as I've got all the changes that are associated with this A&amp;R. Klee's right, he's gonna record this A&amp;R, but that's not gonna have all the changes that actually happen as part of the subdivision.
Well, I'll just, I'll print them all, I'll print them all for you, off, off the website, you know, the, the registry's website, and these will be included in that then, so that'll, they'll be, um, complete. But the rest of the plans, except for the site plans, which gets recorded, the registry plans, aren't gonna change, the streets aren't changing, nothing's changing on the roads, it's just...
No, but your sewer taps and your water taps are gonna change, aren't they? And, and any drainage with this, uh... No, but your sewer taps and your water taps are gonna change, aren't they? And, and any drainage with this, uh?
No, drainage won't change. Drainage won't change, but the sewer, excuse me, sewer and water taps get, um, laterals get put on the aspilts, not on this, Tim. Those are just for aspilts.
Okay.
Laterals, the laterals don't show on here.
Only thing I was gonna ask is, is you've got more permeable surfaces if you're adding lots, and I, that's my question about drainage and, and set, and water and such like that. Is Carl gotta come in and take a look at that? Because there's more, um, non-permeable surfaces now? It's just a question. I'm just.
I hear what you're saying, and what you're saying.
Eyes and cross, this is across the Ts.
It, it's already sized for that, and it already meets for the impervious.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's, it's been done at a hundred and twelve houses already. They cut it to a hundred and nine through the concon, but that was after the plan was approved. So it took into account a hundred and twelve houses. Rooftops and driveways are the only thing that are different.
Correct.
There, there's still a hundred and twelve. There was a hundred and twelve at the beginning, now there's a hundred and twelve now. So
Okay.
that's not gonna change the impervious for the drainage. As far as laterals go, they're just in different places, water and sewer laterals.
Okay.
That's, that's honestly the case.
I just, again, I just, a complete set of plans, and that's the only thing I'm, that's the only reason I'm pushing.
I'll get them for you.
All right.
This is pretty good. I can eat dinner while I'm at the meeting.
Okay, so what's your pleasure on this one, people?
I, I say it's a minor change. Let's get a copy of the changes and from that.
We have a check number for the sixteen fifty?
I don't have access to that check, unfortunately.
You talking to me? Because I had to jump out for a minute. Sorry.
The question was whether or not we have a check number on that. I don't have that information available to me at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, geez, Julian dropped everything off. He, he, didn't he drop the checks off? I, I sign them forever.
No, no, the, the, the check was brought to the town clerk's office.
Oh, okay.
It was or will be cash. I just don't remember the check number.
I just wanted for, for our records.
Um, well, we can get that information to you as soon as possible, Dick.
Try to get it onto the minutes. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So is that, Dick, I think the request is to meet you tomorrow. Can you call, uh, um, Anita and get that check number?
Sure.
And add that to the minutes?
I can.
That would make our minutes complete, because typically we always put the check number in our minutes.
You got it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion?
If Anita doesn't have a copy, I can get you the check number if you need it.
Any more discussion on this one?
I don't have anything.
No.
All right.
The only thing, Dave, can you, can you toggle this thing to, it would be your left, so I can just see? I'm looking for stamps. I'm looking for stamps is what I'm looking for.
The other way.
There we go. That's what I'm looking for. Perfect. Mr. Kalik's stamp. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'm good.
Now, Norm, if I could, just for, for, for the purposes of this type of meeting, if you could just be specific with what the board's approving, maybe citing the, uh, citing the plan or citing the Form A, whatever is necessary.
Okay, it looks like we are, uh, let me see, hold on just a minute. We are looking at a vote to endorse an A and R plan in Bryce Lemon Estates, uh, making changes to lots sixty-nine R, one-ten R, one-oh-nine R, and one-oh-eight R.
All right, good, thanks.
Motion to approve the A and R?
Yes.
To endorse?
To, I'm sorry, to endorse the A and R as so read.
I second.
Dick Williams, aye.
Any further discussion? Okay, in favor by roll call? Dick?
Yeah, Dick Williams, aye.
Uh, Sean?
John Moore, aye.
Tim?
Tim Norwald, aye.
Marilyn?
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
And Norm Anderson, aye.
All right, so this will have to be endorsed at a future time. I'm not sure if you want, actually physically signed, and if you want to work that into the motion, just acknowledge it here. And I can make arrangements with the separate board members after this meeting to, to, to bring it around, to everybody to sign separately, and then notify the, uh, Clea, the applicant on this.
I wouldn't say you have to bring it to us, but we could come up there, correct?
That's fine, too. One way or the other, as long as it's yes, of course.
Yeah. I don't want you at my house. No, I'm just joking.
But, you know, pick some, some, you know, range of time, and, and, you know, just to set it up so that everybody doesn't come up there all at once. Uh...
I can come tomorrow morning.
Yeah, if you want to book that now, that's fine. I'll be here working in the office tomorrow.
Okay.
Just tell me what time you're having mine, and we can set it up.
Good. I'll come after I wake up, around nine, nine, ten o'clock?
Fine. Nine to ten is fine. As long as everybody else can just, you know, not be here during that time, that'd be great.
Sure.
I'm going grocery shopping.
Don't get yelled at. I get yelled at every time I go in a grocery store now. I didn't know there was one-way lines in the grocery store, for Christ's sake.
I, I knew, Clea, how did I know that you were gonna go up the wrong lane and the wrong?
Some lady started yelling at me. I'm going, what are you, who are you talking to anyway? It's me. This is yelling at me for going the wrong way.
I was gonna say, um, David, I'll have to arrange with you to leave it out in our conference room, and I'll have to stop by one night after work in this week and get it signed.
That's fine, yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll call you and arrange that, because I've got keys, so I can get in there and just sign it, so you'll have it when you come in in the morning.
I'll be up about eleven, or at eleven.
Fine.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'll be up sometime tomorrow, but can't say right now exactly when, but I'll make sure I'm not there when anybody else is, or I'll just wait.
Six feet. David, just to make plans, if you leave it out tomorrow night, on my way back from Marlboro, I'll, I'll get everything that we ta, that we run today, I'll get it signed tomorrow night.
So you want it out for tomorrow night?
Yep, I'll come by tomorrow night, get everything signed that we do today, that needs to be signed.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's not a bad idea. I can grab the key out of the SUV and do it tomorrow night when I get back.
All right, so the next A and R is one that affects, uh, assessor sheet twenty-nine parcel number B thirty-four and thirty-five, also known as Woodside Avenue, lots seventy-eight B, seventy-eight R, and seventy-nine R. We have a Form A for that and a corresponding plan. And if Clea, if you want to walk the board through this, please?
I mean, it's basically just, we added two lots in a space where there's a little bit of open space, where we could put them, so we could gain back, you know, the lots that we lost. I, I, it's all it is. I mean, Julian has a much better idea of where he put all these, and he would have been able to explain them if, if he could. I don't even know how to get on this thing, but it's not, we're not adding any new lots. It's just, we moved them.
Okay, and I can also tell the board, you can see the note here, the purpose of this plan is to reconfigure lots seventy-eight R and seventy-nine R. So it's a reconfiguration as well.
And that, that was my question, um, David, when you say reconfigure, are they moved, or are they just changed in size?
The lots appear to be, the lots appear to be moved. Let me get my annotation here.
The dotted lines. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, David. I, I see the dotted lines now. It looks like they.
Do you see this? This is the, uh...
Yeah, there's one.
The dotted lines here and here.
And then there's one right through this, right in front of the seventy R. Yep.
Right there.
Yeah, okay, so they reconfigured them that way. All right.
Oh, okay.
I see it. Yep. I don't have a problem with this.
Um.
Other than the drainage easement in the back.
How are you getting to the open space?
Maybe, maybe not there. It could be in a different area, Dick. I, wherever, wherever we're, we're getting to it now, we're not changing that.
You're not, okay. Yeah, to get over to the other side of the hill.
So, Dick, see what David's looking right now, that locus?
Yeah.
I think it's those two lots, right? One of them is where the locus is pointing to, and then the next, next to it are these two lots.
That is correct.
That's way away from the access to the rail trail.
No, 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 no. Wrong one, Norm. That's the wrong one. The one that, uh, when, way back when Addison and all of us were talking about is where the locus is, is the open space. There's a big hill over there that was gonna have houses on it, where the Donaldson property is at the other end of it. There's supposed to be access to that hill from the subdivision.
There, there is, right there, actually.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Through that road, I mean, you can walk in there, the whole one, whole side of there.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that it's still there.
All right. This seems like an easy one.
Any further comment on it? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to endorse lots, oh, I can't even read it now, um, seventy... Something R, something, uh, seventy-nine R, is it?
If you scroll up to the A, Dick, if you scroll up to the Form A, you can take the information right off of Item Five, Location and Description of Property.
Okay, uh, no, I'll just grab it off the, uh, Form A. It's seventy-eight R and seventy-nine R.
I second that.
Any further discussion on this one? So this is a vote to, uh, endorse the A and R for lots seventy-eight R and seventy-nine R in Bryce Lemon Estates. All in favor?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Marilyn, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Next A and R.
Did you light me up a cigar? You light me up a cigar?
Just say no, Tim.
What's that, Sean?
Just say no. Nancy Reagan.
Long day.
All right, so the next A and R is only referenced by assessor sheet and parcel number, uh, map twenty-nine A, parcel A eighteen, map twenty-nine A, parcel A nineteen.
So these weren't, they weren't, I'm sorry, Norm, go ahead.
Yeah, what lots are we talking about?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Let's look at the locus again. It's been so long, I forgot. Locus will tell us where it is.
It's on the upper side.
One of these plans just kind of encompasses the open space all over again. Some, one of them doesn't have any A and Rs on them. You know, it was just a Mylar to, to, to show the open space correctly, Dave. Do you remember that?
I do. Uh, that was one of the plans that we didn't get the Form A for, which is not, not this one, I don't believe. Says here the purpose, let me just zoom in here. Says here the purpose of this plan is to combine lot, uh, seventy-nine R, or sixty-nine R with the open space parcel to create one parcel of land.
Yeah, we, we had to eat up lot sixty-nine, because it has, see that drainage easement all around it? Those are, those are detention ponds. Lot sixty-nine is a big detention pond now.
So you're getting rid of a buildable lot, Clea, to turn it into a, a, a larger open space pe, piece of property?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I, I don't want to sound like I'm doing anything nice here.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Where, 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 lot sixty-nine is, is now has a huge detention pond on it, so we, it's unusable. So that's why these A and Rs, we got rid of sixty-nine, and we added it somewhere else.
Okay. All right. I guess... David, where, help me out, see where sixty-nine is and where it's added in.
Yeah.
I'm struggling with. I see the drainage lot. I'm just trying to figure out where sixty-nine is, because zoomed, I'm, I'm with Dick. It's tough to see this, because it's not zoomed in.
Yeah, let me just, let me just get a second to get the Mylar that I have in the office here.
Okay.
It's the big parcel of open space, Tim. It, it's hard to read that, but lot seventy is the one next to the big parcel of open space.
Okay.
If you look down the road a little ways, you see where the pump station is?
Yeah.
And then see that sixty-seven right next to it, or sixty-eight right next to it, and then sixty-nine is, is eliminated.
What? What are you talking about? Which one are we?
Hey, hello to Fido. Sean.
I think we're waiting, we're waiting on our planner to get Mylars.
Hundred and twenty-five pounds. Big boy.
You were, you were talking about a pump station?
Yeah, there's a, if you look, just before the curve in the road coming up from the bottom of the plan, you see that little section that has like four little lots on it?
Yeah.
That's where the pump station is.
All right.
Okay.
And that's where originally we're gonna have you, uh, go around that house with the bike trail.
And you're taking, Dick, I'm sorry for interrupting. So that's seventy that you're, or sixty-nine that you're getting rid of, or is that the piece of property?
That's, sixty-nine is gone. What you're looking at is, is there's, is, I believe, sixty-eight.
Okay.
I see that.
So, so, Clea, is where, if I come around that curve, is sixty-nine where the pump station was gonna be, that area, or is it around the curve?
It's right at the curve. It was right at the curve. Oh, hold on. Am I muted? No. It was right at the curve.
Actually, the plans I have here, they don't show a lot sixty-nine R, it shows sixty-seven R, a parcel C, open space, goes to seventy R, seventy-one, seventy-two R.
This plan eliminates lot sixty-nine.
It eliminates sixty-nine and absorbs it into the open space parcel, correct?
Correct.
So, David, if you could use your cursor and, and move it to what is considered sixty-nine, that one right there?
Down here.
No, no.
Where's sixty-nine?
You gotta go up, David, to the curve. See the curve in the road? See, see where seventy is? That's where sixty-nine is, where his cursor's going, was. It's gone now.
Oh, that big lot?
That's huge. That's all open space now, Tim. We just added sixty-nine to the open space, and if you look, there's a drainage easement. That's a big, huge detention pond now.
Yeah, but that always was the detention pond, because that was right next to where we were gonna go to open space. That was always a detention pond, wasn't it?
No, we added a big, huge, there's a huge detention pond there now. If you look at the set of plans, we had to move one out from down there where we just approved those other... No, we added a big, huge, there's a huge detention pond there now, if you look at the set of plans, we had to move one out from down there where we just approved those other lots, way down where the Zone A was, where, where Dick was saying, the, the connection to the open space, there was lots all along there, but they made us move those. And, and they also made us move a detention basin out of there, when we did, when we got the approvals from the DCR and the DEP. So that, one other detention pond got moved to here, so that's why there's a big drainage easement that goes through, all the way through Phase Two, and it empties out into this, this drainage, cause it's all coming from the other side there now.
Alright, well, this just looks, and, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, this looks like what we've been talking about for two months or three months, about trying to how, how we get access to the rail trail.
It's, that's in the same area, tha- that's a whole different plan, though, it's not.
Okay, alright, good, Cle. I, it just looks really familiar, cause I see that little ten-foot strip.
See this?
Yeah.
That's the plan that I showed you the other night, I gave you.
Yeah.
That big huge drainage eas-, where it says that big detention pond next to it? That's in that area, right there. That, that wasn't there before. The detention pond that was there before was always there, but it was way down to the other end.
Okay. I, I just, I remember seeing physical pictures, and then I see that little ten-foot strip that goes through, and this looks like the property that I've been looking at for the last three months.
Yeah, it is, right there, see it?
Yeah, but that, but that drainage is all, or that detention pond's been in the plans that we've seen, correct?
Oh, yeah, you've got the plans with the detention pond, absolutely. But that's an add, that's an add-on to the detention pond, that piece right there is an add-on.
So where, so is the add-ons, try to get the cursor where the add-on is, that's what I'm struggling with.
Okay, it's right next to Lot Seventy.
Seventy, I can't, see, I can't read these, cause it's not.
Yeah, I can't read it either.
Yeah, I'm sorry, see.
So there's Seventy, okay.
See where it says Sixty-nine on this plan here, that I'm showing here in, in the thing? That's gone now, see, there's the Sixty-seven, right over here, there's the pump station, see it?
Oh, so you're taking Sixty, Sixty-nine?
Eight, Sixty-nine, and it's going.
You're calling it drainage easement.
Exactly.
Okay, now I see what you're doing.
And it's being eliminated.
Yeah, Lot Sixty-nine R is formerly in this general area right here.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, David, so now that's gonna be part of total open space.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
So that will make it easier for you to put the bike trail in where you wanted it, then?
It will, absolutely. No, that's, we just, I don't know if it's laid out, I told Julian to lay this out in the field, I'm pretty sure he did.
No, he didn't.
He has to go look at it.
Uh, I, I was up there Sunday, and no, it wasn't.
Yeah, I was up there this afternoon, and it was not.
Okay, well, it will be tomorrow.
Mr. Blair, I, I think I would hold back a, a payments check, but that's just me.
That's a good idea, Tim. If Julian was on here, he'd protest.
Yeah, just, just tell him it's, uh, there's a, a payment plan, and, and you just missed it, cause he didn't do his job.
This is water, by the way, not vodka. I wish he would like it, but.
Alright, I'm good with this one, then. I'll make a motion to accept, uh, uh, Lot Sixty-nine be.
Endorse.
Uh, in, or I'm sorry, I'll endorse, uh, I'll make a motion to endorse removal of Lot Sixty-nine and add it to, uh, open space.
Well, I have a second. Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, in favor, by roll call?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Carolyn Sedoti, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye.
So the last one, for which we have the Form A, is this one right here, this is references open space off of Main Street and Woodside, Assessor Sheet Twenty-nine B, parcel number B-one.
Alright, give us the quick explanation of what's going on here.
Does that need to be endorsed? I don't think that one needs to be endorsed, does it? Or maybe?
Uh, it's what I have a Form A, it, it's one that I have a Form A that corresponds to a plan. There's one other one that I don't have a Form A, and there's a plan only for it. Then there's one plan you'll see after this, it just shows easement, so.
Okay, then I guess, uh, this, this one I believe is just open space, though, right, David?
So, wh- what's being done?
Not changing any lots here.
So th- was this the one that was just as reference?
Where's the purpose on this one?
So, then, then you would not need an endorsement on this? This was the one just for reference for the open space?
I believe so, but it would say it right on it, what, where's, I'm trying to move it down.
Go back up to the locus, it's, it looks like it's just open space, if you see.
Yeah, I think we just did that to clean up the open space, so we could give you a calculation.
But we do have a Form A for it. I'm sorry, we do have a Form A for this plan, so I, I included it.
Let me look, take a look.
If there's no lots, and it's just, it's just cleaning up the total, uh, amount of, uh, when I say total acreage of open space to fifty-three point eight, wouldn't that just be an update to the plan?
That's what it looks like to me.
I, I, I mean, I don't mind taking your money, I'm good with that, but I don't think you'd, me too.
Where's the land coming from?
I think it's existing there, isn't it? Because I don't see any lots being changed.
No, me either.
Is, uh, access to the property, I, I see it at the beginning of the street, I think.
I gotta say that, I gotta say, I'm pretty sure that, that, that just an open space, so that we can do the calculations. I don't see any lots on there either, I'm, wha- wha- what's he asking for it to be endorsed? What's he asking for on the Form A?
It looks like it, it says fifty-three, on the Form A, it says something about fifty-three point eight acres.
Yeah, that's just open spaced.
David, am I wrong? I don't see any requests on that, on that Form A for a lot.
Which one, don't you have a Form A for, Dave? Can I see that one?
Yeah, right, right here.
Okay, that's, that looks like, purpose of this plan is to reconfigure lot, this one needs a Form A, so that other Form A's gotta go to, gotta go to this one.
Oh, they'll have a Form A for this one.
What you're trying to do, Cle, if I read this right, is the plan just before this, you're putting the parcel together, and then this reconfigures taking property away from the parcel?
No, the reconfigure is, is, is an A, it's a required A and R. David, where's it, can I see the Form A again for this?
Got to toggle up, yep, there we go.
Um.
Then rotate that sucker. There we go.
Parcel B-one, Main Street and Woodside Ave. Huh. I, I can't. This isn't, this, this Form A definitely isn't for that. There's no Form A for that? That one looks like it requires a Form A, the one after this.
Yeah, the one after requires a Form A, but I don't seem to have one on file for this, for the one that comes after.
Let me try, Julian.
I mean, i- it looks like that Form A, Cle, is just defining your parcel B-one, and that's it.
Yeah, I know, but it, so it doesn't need to be endorsed?
No, I was gonna say, we don't even need to vote on that. I don't know why you need a Form A for that, because to me, that's just a correction to the plan, but Norm, I could be wrong.
This one needs a Form A, though. Julian, I have a planning board meeting here, and, um, that big open space thing that you did for, um, for, uh, Bryce Estates, you know, it's fifty-three acres? Does that require, why is there a Form A with that? Okay, but there's. You, you're not, you, you're not changing the lot line, are you?
Or are you adding lots?
So. Right, but where, where did you take the open, where's you take the open space away?
When you added the two lots.
Yeah, I think, Dick, you're right, I think this next one that doesn't have the Form A is where the lots get added to, cause it looked when I was reading that plan.
There's one that doesn't have a Form A, Julian, I'm sorry, guys, I'll, I'll put my miss.
Yeah, Dick, it looks like this next one that doesn't have a Form A actually was pulling lots from, uh, parcel B, which was the open space.
Yeah.
Now, the one without the Form A was not, was not clocked in with the town clerk, so it's not actionable by the board. Um, we only included it because it was submitted to us.
We can discuss it, right? Right, uh, David?
Sure, it's on the agenda, of course.
Okay. Well, the only reason I was saying is, when the Form A comes in, I think, if I look at that plan correctly, there, he, he did the fifty-three point eight to then take a lot or two away from it in that next plan, cause it says in that plan something to do with removing from parcel B, right there at the top, where it says, uh, reconfigure open space parcel, um, uh, se- uh, seventy-seven R and, uh, reconfigure open. B, so it looks like he's, he's taking that seventy-seven and reconfiguring it with the open space.
Right, but the one for Sherri's Way, we're gonna need a Form A for that one, because there's definitely something that's changing there.
Yeah, it looks like some lot lines are changing.
Maybe he's missing one. Da- David, you should be, you should have a Form A for that somewhere, no?
I, I could not find it.
Okay, that, this definitely requires a Form A, and we would've brought it up, I, it's been, like you say, a couple of months, so it's probably got misplaced or, or put under a set of papers or something, but Julian remembers bringing up a Form A for it.
No, I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying I can't find it, if we lost it, we apologize, but I don't know what the answer is.
Alright, Jules, I'll call you back.
Well, the impo- important thing, Cle, was the check ever cashed?
Was the check ever cashed, yeah?
If it hasn't, then, uh, everything's MIA.
I don't know.
Well, okay.
What's happening on this one with the, with this, this one right here?
That's not, that doesn't require, um, any, any action, that one doesn't. That's just showing the open space.
What do you mean? Yes, it does, because you added the two lots to it, so now it's gonna show the open space as being different.
Right, so we just wanted to prove that the open space was still sufficient to meet the needs, to meet the, the requirements of the special permit in open space zoning.
And that's why you.
But if you're changing the shape of the open space parcel, that would be a lot change.
That's correct.
We are changing the spa- shape of the open space parcel a little bit, yes.
So that's a lot change, so that would justify an A and R.
Okay, that makes sense, then.
Okay.
Is that, and that's because the two lots that were added on Main Street?
No, not Main Street, but at the far end, heading towards, uh, Sharnak Hill on that road.
Yeah, we, we didn't change.
The first ones we voted on.
Oh, you're talking about those.
Seventy-nine and seventy-eight, Tim, I think.
Okay, that's why, that's why he put that in, because they changed the size of those, the ones, uh, yeah, I see what you're talking about.
Right down on the end there, on the left-hand side, those last two lots, on, on the right-hand side of that road, was added.
And they, they absorbed some of the open space?
That is correct.
Okay, good enough, I, I, I agree then, so we gotta vote on this then.
Yeah.
And, and that other one, there is an op-, there is a Form A for that somewhere. I can bring a copy up to you tomorrow, but we'll have to vote on that, too.
If you don't mind, that'd be great.
We have to, can you vote on it? I mean, it's, it's definitely there, I just.
It wasn't clocked in with the town clerk, unfortunately, I'll leave that to the board's discretion, how they wanna handle that.
Uh, I want the ayes dotted, and Cle, I apologize, but if it's not clocked in, I don't wanna take a vote unless it's been brought to, brought to need and clocked in, otherwise, we're, how do I say this?
Well, the plan is, but what, the Form A is probably two, no? Is the plan clocked in, Dave?
No, we didn't clock either, because we, I didn't have the Form A, so I didn't clock either of it. I didn't clock it in.
Oh, okay, so I'll, I'll bring it back up to you tomorrow, and then you can just vote on it the next meeting.
If you don't mind, I appreciate it.
No, I don't mind, no, no, it's no problem.
I, uh, I guess I make a motion to endorse the reconfiguration of the open space, fifty-three point eight acres for, uh, parcel B-dash-one.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, in favor, by roll call again?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Carolyn Sedoti, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye.
So, Norm, I have one question for you. Seeing that other, that other A and R can't get voted on, and, and are you guys meeting in two weeks?
There is, I know.
Yes?
Yeah, there's a plan to meet in two weeks. It's probably gonna be one of these types of meetings, but the answer's yes.
You gotta give me my thirty days from there for the new set of plans. Cause I don't have. Is that okay?
I'll buy it. Anybody else?
Norm, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
Do they get that in the minutes?
Yeah, that's the only thing, I'd like to make sure that, uh, it's thirty days from the next meeting, and, uh, we'll put the clock down on the taxi.
Okay, so we need an A and R for Sherri's Way, this one, which we don't have yet, that's gonna be forthcoming. And then there was this other plan that was submitted, which shows plan of easement with no endorsement block, I'm not sure why this plan was submitted, but there's no action needed on this one.
I guess, David, my question would be, and, and maybe this is to Cle, if it was submitted and there's a locus, was there a change in the original subdivision plan? Was there a drainage easement added, or what's going here?
Yes.
Okay, so everything I said, yes?
There was a drainage easement added that came from the front side to the back side, and it came all the way across the, the back of the lots on Phase Two, so that it, it could empty into that detention pond, because we don't, we couldn't detain the drainage from the other side any longer. Now, this, is this, if it was a, if it, if this was just for, for, uh, an easement, it would be an eighty-one X, and it wouldn't need approval by the planning board. So this must need approval by the planning board.
Well, the only thing here is that this doesn't have a signature block, um, nor do we have a Form A for it.
Oh, then that, then that's an eighty, you know what? That's an eighty-one X, and I should've got, that, that, you guys don't need that, don't even think about it, I got it.
Alright, so, and this one was not clocked in, and it's not gonna be clocked in, this one will, will just be left as your eighty-one X plan.
Correct, yep.
Okay, good.
I need to go, I need to go get that, that's all.
And that drainage eas-, that drainage easement was also for, for access to the, uh, open space, right?
Well, it was, the purpose of it, Dick, was to add, so we could run the pipe across there, but it does give you access to the open space for sure, right, right here.
Yeah.
So, Norm, I, I guess my question is, is this something that, uh, Carl's reviewed, or, or, or does it need review by Carl, or? I, I get there's an eighty-one X form, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying, does this, if you wanna call it sectional cut from the, the subdivision plan, that'll get updated, even though we're not voting on it, is this something we should send to Carl and just have him give his blessing on, because it is a change to the original plan?
I think it would be a good idea.
Okay. Is that a submission through us, or do we need Cle to send that to Carl?
I'll bring it, I'll, I'll send it, I'll, I'll send it over to him. You want me to send it to all of them, or just this one?
Well, this is the only one, cause the other ones, A and Rs, we typically don't have Carl look at those, do we, if we approve those? But because this has to do with drainage is my only question.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an easement, it's an eighty-one X, like you said, it, it does not require planning board approval, but if he, if he wants, you wanna have him take a look at it, I, I, I'm sure he'd, he'd take, I'd get it over to him.
Norm, the only reason I say that is because then we'll have a piece of documentation and something to master cha- change in the, uh, plan.
Yeah, something to match it up with.
Correct, that's what, that's the only reason I was asking for Carl to look at, and if somebody asked this change, did you have anybody? And if somebody asks this change, did you have anybody look at it? We'll have a report from saying, yes, we did.
Yep.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, sounds like that's it for the A and Rs.
Thank God.
What was, what was that other one there, um? Oh, gosh.
This, the, the one that we have, I have to bring up tomorrow, Dick? The Form A was missing? This one?
Yeah, that one there?
Yeah, the Form A's missing. I have to bring a Form A up tomorrow, the actual form itself. And they're gonna vote on it in two weeks, you guys are.
Alright, was this in phase one or phase two?
Sherri's Way is in phase four, I think, or five.
Okay, way over, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, what do we got?
And, and one, excuse me, one more thing on that. That, uh, the right away to get into that open space, is that just like it is on the original plan?
Yeah, we, we, we would have mentioned it if it changed it on here, then it didn't change anything.
Alright, but you have no other way of getting to that open space other than that, correct?
Me, me mean in the whole site, Dick, or just in this area?
Well, in that area, it, it seems odd that, you know, the, um, Cheryl, Cheryl Way or whatever it is there, you didn't, you haven't got a, an easement, you might say, from there over to the open space.
Well, Sherri's Way, it, it just, I had to change the name. It, it was East Wyndham or West Wyndham, I forgot. But the, the, uh, Anita asked me to change the name on them.
Yeah.
On one of them, cause there was, the East and West Wyndham would get mixed up. I, I can't see from this uh, plan without looking at a full set where the access to the open spaces, Dick. I can't tell you that.
Yeah. I've, I've just, I'm just wondering. It just seems like a, an awful long trail around the edge to get to the open space. You know, and unfortunately, there may be that you can't utilize the end of Cheryl, uh, Sherri's Way there to get to it.
Well, Sherri's, where's Sherri, isn't Sherri's Way, uh, up near, um, Pi- Picky Lemons and, and Algoos? Where's Algo?
It's gotta be close to that.
Right, so the Sherri, the, the, the open space is on the other side there, isn't it?
It's on the upper side.
I, I can't, I can't really tell from this plan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it just, it's just one of those things I wrote down here, you know, did the original plan look like this for the open space access?
We have the locus up here, is that helpful?
Well, yes, I mean, uh, that's where I've seen it, yeah, and that's up close to, uh,
Right.
Love and, and the other gentleman's property.
Algo.
Yeah, and, uh, but if you go back to the other side, you'll see where you have to travel quite a distance.
It's a hike.
To get to that open space.
It's a hike to get to the open space, but it is anyway, cause it's on the other side of the site.
Yeah. Alright, well, that's, uh, that's where it was in the original plan, then I'm gonna stick with it.
Okay. So just to re- refresh my memory here, just the eighty-one X I'm taking to Carl?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, Norm, that's all I was asking Clea to do is just take that one to him, cause that's the only one that, everything else is A and R changes.
Yep.
Alright, so what's that report that we were gonna get into? Is that Bryce or is that something else?
You guys hear booms today?
No.
We blasted over there today.
At Bryce Lemon?
Maple Hill.
Now, this is Maple Hill State Subdivision. This is a inspection report from Carl Holzmann dated March twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty to the board. It was in the packet, sent electronically.
Yeah, I got it. I just didn't, uh, I was trying to figure out Carl's comment of how, how road fill and foundation fill even matched up together.
There's no road, no, we, we use the, we're not, we can't use it in a road. It didn't, it didn't work.
Okay, that, that's where I was getting confused. I couldn't believe the two were the same. So that's why I was gonna ask for a clarification of what the heck is this report talking about?
Well, basically it, it didn't pass what's called the sieve test. It was good gravel, but it, it, it's got too many fines in it, so it doesn't, it's not gonna allow it to go through. It's good for fill, but it's not good for, um, uh.
So you could use this to backfill a foundation. You can't use it for road base then.
You can actually use it under a foundation. But you can't use it, you can't use it for the gravel in the road.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out when I was reading.
And I wish you could, cause it, it's good stuff. Other than that, just too much fines in it. I can't even crush it out of it, so it, it didn't make sense to.
Oh, so there's too much, so there's not enough, uh, space for the water to get to drain.
Right, it's not, it's not coarse enough.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I was saying, it's got too much clay in it. Uh, that first paragraph at the end of it, this office does not perform structural analysis and cannot comment on the suitability of the soil below building foundation. Who, who does that? Do they recommend somebody?
Yankee does that for me and I have, when I, when I, if I don't put a foundation on virgin soil, I have to have, I, I have what they, they, I vibratory roll it and lift, so you put a foot of soil in and then you vibratory roll it and then another foot and vibratory roll it. And every foot, every lift, Yankee comes in and does, does a compaction test to make sure it meets ninety-five percent compaction or more, otherwise the foundation will sink. And then they certify it.
And.
You gotta have the right material under it.
Just from my knowledge and, you know, it, it's not really anything to do with the who in the town looks over those reports and approves them or, or, or does?
Well, the only one who would need to look at those would be Willie and he does.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Yep.
Okay. Sometime down the bike, I gotta take a ride down there and take a look, walk in there and take a look at this.
It's beautiful in there.
And hold on, and this was Maple Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How come back up there, did I see Bryce Lemon? If you go back up, David. Go back up to the page before I'm gone. Keep going, a little bit. There it says, it says, I've visited Bryce Lemon. I'm confused.
He messed up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused on this report, so keep going down. Little bit farther, little bit farther, right there, Mar- March twenty-third, twenty-twenty. I've visited Light Bryce Lemon Estate Subdivision with Mr. George. I'm confused right there.
Yeah, it was actually Maple.
Let me get into this report.
It's a Scribner's hour, if you will. Obviously it's Maple Hill. I, I can tell you that I was there during that site visit at Maple Hill, so.
All I'm asking is somebody tell Mr. Carl that we like him, but could he correct this and send? Rev one. Clea, do you really want Marcia going through these records and, uh?
Yeah, give her something to do.
No, I, I would rather have us revved up and correctly put into.
I agree, I agree.
So. Alright, thanks. That's it.
Any other comments on the Quinn report?
No, I don't.
Alright. Now, this is where I'm struggling. I read through this and I'm not sure what we're trying to do.
Oh, boy.
I, I, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, not accept this and ask for a conservation restriction, a real one.
Can I, can I give you a few pointers first?
Nope.
Or at least, at least give you my half of it. When, when you guys, can I speak, Norm? I, I.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, um, when, when, when this all came to be, um, the, uh, the conservation restriction, Jeff Lacy asked for it to be approved by the E O E A, E O E E, I guess. Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, E O E A. So with the exception of the one on, uh, Central Tree Estates, I, I, we have not used, we have not gotten any of them through the E O E A. But Central Tree Estates was, and I know that the most recent one that you did was with Mike Gasperoni and that was a private one. But none of those had anything to do, um, with going through the E O E A. This, in my opinion, and in George's opinion as well, only being two and a half acres, probably wouldn't qualify under their regulations for them to accept it. And it's probably a two-year ordeal to get them to accept it. He says, the C I through the, lasts forever, but it takes all control away from the town and the property owner. Properties have to qualify and that is often not easy. Since Central Tree Estates, all OP restrictions, open space restrictions have been for, private. So you've all done private restrictions. Now, the one thing that this lady, I read her review, I mean, I just got it an hour ago. Uh, the big thing that George points out is that she does not take into account this being an easement and a restriction. Easement, the restriction will expire in thirty years, but easements don't. So she didn't voice that at all. Okay, the worst part of this is the, 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 the special permit requires a C I through the state under condition number nine. Now, that's not gotten in there since Central Tree, so I don't know how that got put in the special permit, but we didn't even get a chance, normally, you know, you guys will send them over and we get a chance to look them over. And then, you know, make sure that it, it's stuff that we all get to agree on, you know what I mean? And thi- this, this just got done and I, I never, I, I, I never did see it, which is fine, but it's just that number nine, that condition number nine, hasn't been put any on, in any of them until this one. So it, it's, it's not really with, she's missing the point that it's, it is an easement and a restriction. And it, George says that it's a minimum of a two-year approval through the, uh, E O E A. I mean.
Well, that's, that's what bothered, the, the thirty-year thing, that's what really got me uptight about it.
Right, it, it doesn't, this doesn't expire. With, cause it has an easement on it as well.
But that's, you are correct and through our town planner, Dave, I, I want a thing from Amy about that. If we're talking easement and restriction, I want to know if this is true. Cause in thirty years, I don't want somebody to buy this and be able to put a house in there or something like that. And if that's what's gonna happen with Gasperoni, shame on
It's not.
Amy for not knowing, because I, I really pushed for having something different than a conservation restriction.
It's not gonna happen on Gasperoni. It's not gonna happen on anybody's because there's an easement involved. The restriction does, does expire unless it's through the E O E A, but if you do, anything, any change that the town wants to make, let's, let's say that the, the, any change that you wanna make to that, if the E O A, if, if it's a, goes through the E O E A, it's gotta be an act of the legislative nature to change it.
Yeah.
That's why we make them private. That's why they, none of them have been like that since Central Tree.
Well, that's, that's one reason why I wanted it private and not, not go through the state. But there again, I, I wanna make sure everything is looked at and I did not know about this easement part of it.
Yeah, and Amy didn't pick up on that either.
No, and I, I, I need to know. I really need to know.
Norm, through Dick's point, can we, you know, so we don't have to have her review the whole thing, can we just ask her a question? The easement issue?
Okay, uh, you know, not, number one, I, I'm having a great deal of difficulty with that thirty-year thing myself. Uh, you know, I won't be around in thirty years, but the land will be and so will other people. Uh, but, uh, I, I would have to say, no, obviously she did not mention, I kinda read over her whole thing. I don't think anywhere did she even mention the word easement in, in her reply. So I think a, a, a single question regarding that is, is maybe appropriate.
Okay, that's the only thing I, I needed to review the whole thing, but ask her, you know, we've got a conservation easement and restriction that, that if we would sign this from the easement standpoint, it would be, if you wanna use the word forever. And the, the C I would only good, be good for thirty years. I'm struggling with the legal document that sort of, it, it has, has two different expiration dates on it.
Well, not, not that, what, you know, what does the easement itself protect?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you can build, you, you can put a easement through a property, put a house on it, correct?
But you know, that's, that's what it kinda sounds like to me.
Easement is in conjunction with the restriction, so the easement is for the purpose of the restriction.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
I, I guess.
It's a conservation easement and restriction. It, it doesn't say it's a conservation restriction with an easement. So what it is, is the, it, it's conservation easement and restriction. It, it's both as one.
Yeah.
It, it will stay, that, that's why it maintains perpetuity. If, if it just said conservation restriction, she's correct, but it doesn't.
Well, tha- and that was my only question, Clea, is since the easement is, again, I use the word for and the restriction's off thirty years and they're in one document, I, I, I'm struggling with that. And that's the only reason I wanna ask you a question about the easement issue.
Yeah, but do you realize how many of them you got out there like this? Everyone with Central Tree is like this. Bryce, Noble, Brittenel, uh, Gasperoni, I think Julian's, uh, Moose Crossing, anybody?
I don't remember ever voting and signing on these, so that's the reason why I'm confused about this one.
Gasperoni, I remember very well.
Yeah.
Maybe, I, I might, but I don't remember any other ones, like no those that I was around. So if they're out there, I guess. Anyhow, it's just a question. I just wanna, to Norm's point, just make sure the eyes are dotted and this one.
My question is, if it is in perpetuity, can we use the private restriction as opposed to going to the E O E A? I have to record this before I can transfer the land. If I gotta wait two years, I can't transfer any property. I, I, I can't sell a house.
Well, is there any way of putting in the deed that, that, uh, it is non-buildable or something like that or?
I have to put on a quit, you have to get it on a claim or a, uh, a, yeah.
I have to transfer the land, cause, cause right, either that or I guess maybe Dave and I can transfer it to the customer.
I don't know, we, we've just.
So is there some question you wanna ask town councilor? So if someone could phrase that question for me, that'd be great.
I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I just, this to me, when I'm reading through it, to Norm's point, I'm a little bit over my head here.
Well, then let's have an attorney look at it then, Norm.
Yeah. And, you know, we do want, we do wanna be at least reasonably specific. A- a- and, you know, my question would be, okay, you, you know, on, on, on this document, what effect does the idea that this is an easement as well as a restriction?
Yeah, Norm, that's what I was gonna say. Is it a paradox to have those two in the same document? I, 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 I don't know.
Contradiction.
Yeah.
So what's the question? So what effect does the idea of the easement, what, the rest of it?
Will the, will the easement protect the property from being able to be sold? Will the, will the easement protect the property from being able to be sold in 30 years?
The question that needs to be asked is, on, on condition, on condition number nine, can we substitute it to say with an easement and restriction?
Oh, so you want to take this document, Clay, and substitute, um, or, or orders of condition nine with this?
On special permit, condition number nine requires a, 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 a conservation restriction through the E R E, E O E A. We want to ask that, that we take the special permit and we take condition number nine and have it say, can we require a conservation easement and restriction?
Well, I don't, I don't think there's any question about that, we can. The question is, do we want to?
There you go, it's allowed in the bylaw. It's not a contradiction, it's allowed in the bylaw. You guys have a choice, you can make it either go through the E O E A, or you can do it this way. But I think this way gives the town more control, and it doesn't take forever to get through.
Yeah.
But it is allowed in the bylaw, that's why you did it on all the other ones.
I just, I'd like to have some kind of a written thing about that from her.
I, I think probably the reason that we did it in all the other ones is that we were not aware of this 30-year limitation.
Correct.
Correct.
And there's got to be, there's, we've got to have an answer as to what effect does that one word, easement, have on that 30-year drop dead date?
Yeah.
The easement and restriction.
Go ahead, Clay, I'm sorry.
Um, I apologize. When it's a restriction and an easement, George says that the restriction expires in 30 years, but easements don't. So the easement will never expire.
But what does the easement do?
It, it, it holds, as far as I'm concerned, it's the, it's a conservation easement and restriction.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, it can't. The easement can't be the same thing as the restriction. Otherwise, we wouldn't need the restriction.
It's allowed in the bylaw. It, it works.
That, that's my, that's my tough part is down, David, if you can just toggle a little bit farther, under number two. It, it, it's got that conservation restriction, this conservation easement and restriction. And that's where I'm struggling from a, from my limited legal experience is, you've got two words in there that have different, different definitions, and that's where I'm struggling and want the attorney to tell us.
Easement is a grant, it lasts forever. That comes from my attorney.
Yeah, I just.
Because yes, they can substitute those, that for number nine, and, and he's, your attorney should tell you that.
Okay, well, I guess I, I'm with Sean on this, I just need an opinion from Amy.
Yes, same here.
Yep.
Delete my data, sorry.
So I, 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 I know, I guess through Norm for David, I think this is easy. Give us an opinion on this document, specifically the purposes and how it, uh, how it will affect our sp, our special condition number nine, if any.
George says it's like a light easement and solar.
What, what does that word easement give us?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
You guys.
I think we're, I think we can beat this horse to death, but we can't do anything until Amy tells us, gives us some feedback.
Well, let me ask you a question though, if we could get this, if the easement makes it last forever, then is this acceptable?
Correct.
I'm, my opinion is I'm not going to give one until I see something from our attorney in front of me.
I know that, but I, I'm, but I'm, I'm not, it's not a hypothetical question. If she answers yes, it makes it permanent, then is it okay to substitute this for that? Because that's the real question, can we substitute this for that?
I, I would, I would kind of think so. Uh, I, I, let's put it this way, I, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we're going to get back a clear-cut answer.
Yeah, she's a lawyer.
Oh, God, no.
She, she knows what an easement does though, she'll, she'll tell you what an easement does. It'll last, makes it last forever, it never goes away, you can't get rid of it, I know that.
All right.
It's a cloud on the title. By the way, can we let George craft a question? Help craft a question?
I think I'm all set with what that is, I'll confirm with Norm what question we want to ask, and then we'll circulate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, I don't know if it makes a difference, and if I could please just point it out, I hope I'm not being rude. I noticed that they misspelled Maureen Suzerko's name on the document. I, I don't know why I picked up this. I just thought I'd point it out.
Oh, that's.
He probably took it off the plan, right?
Yeah, you mean the plan that was spelled wrong, Clay?
Yes.
Yeah, that's recorded wrong, that I'm sure somewhere down the way a title search company is going to say eh.
Yeah, hey, nice catch, Tamika.
Oh, thanks.
All right, what do we got next?
Okay, next, on the agenda, let's see, conservation modification. Uh, looking for the next thing, okay. Uh, next thing on the agenda is subdivision, development administration, Bryce Lemon, potential discussion, street acceptance, and any other relevant item. Uh, I, I think I want to just very, very quickly, I just want to get a consensus from the board, go back to those A and Rs. Uh, and I'm going to have to go back and probably look at them again for the fees, because obviously some things have gotten mixed up. Uh, they wrote us a check for sixteen hundred and fifteen dollars, fifty dollars. My first round, and I, I think I, I, I think I included maybe one more A and R than what we've actually done. I came up with a total of, I think it was twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars for the fee. However, one of the things that I have had in my mind is, these A and Rs are all within this one subdivision. Would it be reasonable, and I'm going to leave it up to all of you guys, for us to treat these four as a single A and R? And just add on, in on the fees, the number of lot changes? When I calculated it that way, the actual fee then turned out to be more like about nine hundred dollars. Is everybody following me?
Yeah, Norm, I, I'm just, the, the word precedent keeps coming into my mind.
Well, what's wrong with that as a precedent, that's a good precedent.
No, not for us it isn't.
If it's all within one subdivision?
Well, it, it's, it's three different recordings.
What does that mean to you, though? I'm the one who pays for the recordings, not you guys.
No, no, but it, it, I think what Norm's getting at, instead of being individual fees, so what you're saying, Norm, is you're taking away the, uh, the initial amount for two of the three sub, two of the three.
That'd be, yeah, the only one three hundred dollar fee, and then we add up fifty dollars for each lot change in all of them together.
That's fair, because it, it's all within the same subdivision, like you said, it's just because there's so many plans, because it's so big, it requires that many more plans, but it's still within the same subdivision.
I think Clay could probably have submitted this on a single sheet of paper.
Well, then I would say Julian comes up with the six hundred dollars then.
Yeah, that's like squeezing blood from a stone.
Norm, I, I, I mean, my opinion, I'm okay with it. Could, could I, oh God, because it's already been recorded. I was going to say, to make the paperwork line up with the fees, is there any chance that we could get an, uh, an addendum or a revision to the form A's that has all these put together so it matched up? Or is that going to throw everything out of whack?
It needs to be on a forty scale, I think. I'm not positive, but I'm not an engineer, but I think that's why that there's so many plans, but.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I don't have a problem if we put it in the minutes, same, because they're all happening at the same time, the same subdivision. Wave the initial three hundred dollar fee on two of the three form A's.
Okay.
I guess that's a motion.
I'm going to go really, yeah, I'm going to go real wild on this. Since we already have a check for sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, I want to say that we collect the A and R fees, but we keep that whole check and put the remaining number, or the remaining money into the Bryce Lemon consultant account.
I, I, I agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
It cuts down on the ten grand I owe you.
I thought it was ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, we've been through this.
That was my calculation.
I know.
That sounds good.
All right.
Everybody in agreement on it?
I am.
Yes.
Okay.
What's next?
Just, just the only other thing that I would mention on Bryce Lemon is I did take a drive over there today, and it looks like, uh, Clay, you have raised the manhole covers.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that means you're getting down close to ready to do some paving.
Yes, sir. The, the, the plant's not open yet, but as soon as they do, pretty close, we're going to pave it up.
Okay, and you have worked out final details with Joe Buckley regarding what kind of a curb, berm, whatever you want to call it, you're putting at the entrance?
I will before I do it, but he did, he did write an email that I, I think I found it. He just wanted an, an increased height, um, uh, concrete curbing so that cars couldn't go over it that easy. But I, I'll, I'll make sure that he approves what I, I'll, I'll give him a piece and have him approve it first.
Before you put it in, right?
Oh, yeah, I don't want to do this twice, I don't need the practice.
Okay.
I, I do want to apologize, I was supposed to respond to a February 6th letter, and I just read through my notes and I forgot to do that, so I'll, I'll do that tomorrow. If there's anything left open on it, I, I'll respond to it. You would ask me that last time.
All right.
Anybody else have anything on Bryce Lemon?
Nope.
Well, believe it or not, we're getting there, next thing is, uh, on the agenda, town meeting, update on the schedule, which basically is kind of saying, we don't know.
One, one thing before, um, Clay leaves, may I, may I ask him something?
Yes.
On Britnall North, um, when I drove down by there, I, I felt that if you could put it, I noticed that you own the property around George Jones's place.
Yes.
The land is fairly flat, you know, or somewhat before his house. If you made a driveway go in there, four, five hundred feet in there, and then swing it around and then come back around and out.
It's a huge wetland in there, Dick.
But not behind George's house?
Yeah, up in there, plus it's, it's not, we, we've looked at coming in eighteen different ways from Sunday, we can't get, we can't get it in there. Any other way than the way we are, I, I'll have Julian take another look at it, but I'm pretty sure there's loaded with wetlands in the back there.
Well, I, I kind of thought it, it looked pretty decent, and unfortunately, the wetlands map on the G I S and for the town of Rutland isn't perfect either, so.
And by the way, the new name is Hilltop Estates, remember Norm renamed that last meeting?
Oh, he did, Hilltop Estates?
He said no more, no more north, south, east, west, same names, remember?
You got it.
It's Hilltop Estates from now on.
Sounds good. All right, well, I just thought I'd ask you about it anyways, because I, I did take a look at it, and to me, I would have gone in below George's and not above.
Well, before the next meeting, we're going to have something for you guys, hopefully you can take a look at it and let me know what you think.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to jump off then.
All righty.
Thank you, guys, good to see you all again, even if it was remotely.
Okay.
Stay safe, everybody.
Bye, Clay.
Bye-bye.
Okay, uh, like I say, town meeting, I don't think we have anything to really discuss.
What about elections, I'm not, I'm only good till June 30th, and then I can't work anymore.
Oh.
That's because he's not, uh, on the planning board anymore.
After June 30th, I'm not on the planning board anymore, by state law.
No, I, I think, I think, uh, didn't Baker take that into consideration, that the, the elections are postponed?
Okay, I just, I, I, okay, I know he put the elections on hold, but the actual rulings in the general law, and I didn't know if he could suspend that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I remember hearing that, uh, you know, uh, present members, their term would be extended until the election.
Okay, because I think.
That was not done by executive order, that was done by legislation approved by the House and Senate and passed as a bill, or passed as a law, rather, which extended timelines for elections, including for planning board.
Okay, okay, perfect, I just, because I know, I, I think last heard, I'm just running against the write-in votes, and that's it.
Yeah, so, hey, you got a bonus, how about that?
Yeah.
See, now you ought to get a little per diem on those extra, you're going to be on the board.
I, I would prefer that our, our per diem or our stipends went back to normal, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I haven't heard. I haven't heard any news on that at all.
Yeah, well, I thought, I thought somebody had mentioned that, uh, Mike said no way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I know in his budget, it, it was, it was not, the budget, at least I saw, it was not, um, part of his budget of increasing our, or re, putting our stipends back to where they were. Now, I don't know if that's going to change with the new school budget, because the existing one's out the door.
Yeah, especially if there's no transportation, no school.
Unfortunately, Dick, knowing that the young lady I live with, I had to listen to a, a meeting with her and Dan Diddy, and, um, you almost had to pull me off the ceiling, I was so hot and bothered by that meeting.
Wow.
So, um, I, I don't expect a school to give anything back to any of the five towns.
Uh, how about a lawsuit?
Well, I, I would prefer a, and again, this is getting off the subject, I would prefer the state to come in and do an audit.
Yeah, amen.
All right, I'm off subject, I know we want to get this over with.
Right after this, there's one, something else is, and, and that's, uh, what Tamika sent us, Lucas, is it, environmental? On Britnall Estates.
Oh.
And, uh, one of the, I, I, I had a, let's put it this way, I, I, well, you probably can't see it, but I've been doing a lot of writing on that sucker. And where he knocked it down, you know, below five thousand square foot, so they could get away without, you know, uh, getting, you know, Army Corps of Engineer and a few other people involved. But my biggest thing was I wanted to make sure that Quinn Engineering saw that box culvert with no bottom.
What?
How is it going to be supported after, you know, a year or two of driving over and it gets pounded in? Not being a bottom or something.
You mean Dick, you mean like all the culverts and Holden?
Yes. So anyways, I just want to make sure, and I think I'm not sure, but, uh, that Quinn will be taking a look at it, because that will be a change in the plans that we have.
Yeah, there's, you know, and I don't know if it's still in the cards, uh, because I, I, I was out on that walk with whatever the heck agency it was. Uh, because I, I, I was out on that walk with whatever the heck agency it was. Uh, and, you know, there was discussion there of trying to get the area, I don't know what you call it, area disturbance or whatever.
Yeah.
Down below a certain number of square feet. And, uh, there, there was an idea even tossed around that, uh, you know, like we require the twenty-one foot wide roads. But at the wetland crossings, possibly shrinking the width of the road down by a couple of feet.
I noticed that was listed in here, and then cantilever, a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think I like that cantilever and stuff.
Well, let, let's put it this way, any of that kind of stuff, Blair's going to have to come to us.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, one of the things that, uh, I, I'm trying to, uh, run this through, through my mind, and, uh, and the dam on Molten Pond. I've been reading all about that, too, so, and that's, uh, I don't know if this will affect it or not. Where's the water from the roads, you know, that adds more water to Molten Pond?
Interesting.
So anyways, okay, that's it.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. So on this very last item, is there any opinion of the board on a preferred day for town meeting?
I, I, uh, David, I, I sent an email back to Mike. My suggestion was, uh, sometime in mid-June.
I agree.
Okay, so does the board want to weigh in collectively on this, or just let it be?
I agree, this June.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I, you know, I just got to say, not until it's safe. And I don't care if that's June, July, or next December.
I got news for you for crying out loud. I, as jokingly as I was, Norm, with that thing about going up there with the cars in a circle, I'm beginning to think that sounded pretty good now.
Yeah.
Hey, hold on a second, you retirees. Some of us have a job we got to keep, okay?
But we can pull up.
I can't afford, I can't afford the country to be closed for another three months.
I'm going to start looking for those speakers from the old drive-in theaters, then we can pull up and everybody talk.
Well.
Anyways. I'm still open.
Well.
I feel I'm essential.
I just, yeah. I don't know. I, I, I just hope this whole thing does quiet down quicker than they say, but.
Yeah.
It's. To be perfectly honest with you, to me, it's downright, it's just plain depressing at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. However, spring is here. I got a hundred and forty tomato plants growing.
Awesome.
I was going to say, Norm, you got the tomato plants moving.
Wow. That's great.
So.
And all I can tell all of you people is just keep looking up.
And, and Norm, do you have your tomato pants socially distanced from each other?
Yes, I usually put them in ten packs, and I have them in six packs.
I'm sorry, I was being a smart aleck.
Oh, God. Oh, I, I know one thing I had mentioned to, uh, oh, my gosh. To Dave, open space design in the zoning bylaws I was reading, and in there. I can't remember exactly where it was now, if I can find that slip of paper, which I can't. Um, log in. And deep cuts, well, not deep, but, uh, the angle of the hill. If you go drive down there and you look from Main Street, one twenty-two A in there, and see how steep the hill is. It says anything over fifteen, you know, an engineer is supposed to be looking at it, so I told. I told Dave about it. Damn it, what did I do with that slip?
Is it fif- Dick, fifteen degrees?
It's all, anything over, I think anything over fifteen degrees, engineer is supposed to be looking at it, and the amount of trees, there are certain trees that shouldn't be left and everything else, so that's in our bylaw, so I wanted to make sure that in Article Six, Open Space Design Options, that, uh, we, we should be, uh.
Norm, we should invoke that behind the houses around us then, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, after going up to Bryce Lemon and seeing the washing out and the part of the bank and stuff there, behind those houses.
Wow.
That, that one house has a retaining wall behind it. It must be fifteen, maybe twenty feet high.
Yeah.
Jesus.
Unbelievable.
So anyways, I, I feel that, uh, I just want to make sure that our engineer is familiar with our bylaws and open space. And, and, uh, Mr. Blair is, is, uh, adhering to it.
Is that, is that just a, uh, an email from David or somebody to Carl, just as a reminder?
I believe that should be.
That's not like a bad idea.
Yeah, maybe I could just make a suggestion. Uh, Dick, if you want to draft whatever email you want me to pass along to Carl, I'd be glad to do so. All right, if you want to cite the relevant section and cite whatever project you're, you have, uh, which you're interested in.
Yeah, so I'll do that. I'll do that.
The one thing I was going to bring up, do we need a, a vote, since we sort of voted on to have a business meeting on the twenty-sixth? And I really don't think it's going to happen? Do we need to rescind that, rescind that meeting or, or have a vote to postpone it? Or is that, I'm just, does it matter? It's more, it's more, uh, I'm looking to cover procedure.
Well, you want to postpone it for another month and just see what happens between now and then?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that to the end of May. And we'll advise on date. I'm, I don't have mind, I don't mind making a motion on that to suspend April twenty-sixth meeting and postpone it till a later date in, in the latter part of May.
Twenty-sixth is a Sunday.
Yeah, April twenty-sixth is a Sunday.
I thought we.
Whoa, April twenty-sixth is, is Tuesday. In May.
May twenty-sixth?
No, no, April twenty-sixth is when our, our meeting, I thought.
April twenty-sixth is, that's a Sunday in April.
All right, I don't have the meeting minutes in front of me.
I don't have anything in my calendar.
Uh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh, well, the twenty-eighth, we have.
Maybe it's twenty-eighth, okay. I apologize. I knew it was the end of April that we made, that we set the date.
Well, let's put it this way, it hasn't been posted.
Oh, okay. Well, then I guess, uh, for the meeting minutes, uh, can we move, is the board in agreement to move it to the end of May?
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
To a date in May to be determined.
Yeah, I was going to say end of May or later, depending upon, uh, on co- on, on. I don't know, COVID nineteen?
Yeah, let's put it this way, there's an extra Tuesday in June. The June thirtieth is the, the fifth Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's the only thing I wanted to get in the minutes is we're not, I would, I didn't want to have a business meeting over Zoom.
No.
Just a note, or are we going to take a vote on it?
Since it's not scheduled to Norm's point, I just think we make a note in the, in the, um, meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right.
I have a question about the bylaw meetings, and I need to think about it a little bit, but I think it'd not too about the idea of doing it over Zoom.
So you want to try it sometime in June, Marilyn?
Um, yes, that would be, that would be, uh. I'm not too sure about this format, that's my issue.
Well, the tenth or the twenty-fourth is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
In June, so, uh.
I, I'll tell you right now, unless we have someone that can do a very, very good job of, let's say, handling uh, Microsoft Word over Zoom. Trying to do something like writing bylaws and that sort of thing is going to be very difficult.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's working, it's working for the bylaw committee, because Peter Crane does, does a really, really good job. You know, of, of displaying and, and all of that kind of stuff.
Right.
Uh. But I don't know, I, I don't think we have anybody that can really do that in our committee.
I agree. I have been thinking about it. This is the first, my first experience with Zoom, but I think it would be hard.
So why don't, why don't we try to figure maybe that near the end of, uh, June, Marilyn, for a meeting? Because hopefully by that time we will be out of this and.
Well, we don't, I don't think we need to put a date on it, really, but.
Wow.
The date to be determined.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh. Uh, Tomica?
Yep.
Can you put that in the minutes that we will, um, put the bylaw subcommittee on hiatus until, uh,